Well, yes, I know you want to see the flag, but unfortunately, they put it behind the pillar. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to call this meeting a order. This is the North Miami Planning Commission for Wednesday, May 17th, 217, at 7:00 PM in council chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Yes. As soon as we get four chairs in here, we'll advance to the next part of this. All right, if we're all set, may we have roll call the board members, please?
Chair Kevin Seifried.
Present.
Vice Chair Charles Ernst.
Present.
Commissioner Kenny Eich.
Here.
Commissioner Jason James.
Here.
Commissioner Peggy Boulay.
Here.
Commissioner Bob Pashon.
Here.
Commissioner Mike McNamara.
Present.
We have quorum.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. Now, are there any amendments to the agenda?
None.
No amendments? All right. Do we have any communications? None? All right. We have no continued public hearings, so we'll move to the issue at hand. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to explain to you the protocol we're going to follow for tonight in order to provide a certain sense of structure and direction to tonight's proceedings. These land development regulations are rather voluminous and, in fact, are divided into seven sections. So what we are going to do by motion from the commission, if the commission so approves, is take this one section at a time. The public hearing will be opened as to that section, and then it will be closed. We'll have our commission discussion, vote on that section, then we go to the next section. And when we're done, we'll sum up the tally of the commissioners and approve the package or not, based on what we've heard tonight. All right? Now, at this time, I'm going to read the item in, and then we'll call for a motion on the procedure. This is a public hearing identified as PC 1-17, an ordinance of the mayor and city... What? Oh, that's right, we forgot to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Oh, my goodness. Do we get a motion on the minutes?
So moved.
Mike McNamara moves to approve.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bob Pashon. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Madam Secretary, do you have the page? Ah, you're wonderful. Thank you, Marley. We'll sign this. For some reason, I traditionally forget that each week. I don't know why. There we go. Thank you. All right, so back to the reading here. This is PC 1-17, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, repealing in their entirety, Chapter 3... Is this the right page? Chapter 3, entitled Alcoholics Beverages; Chapter 20, entitled Tree Preservation and Protection; and Chapter 29A, entitled Wireless Telecommunications Towers and Antennas of the Code of Ordinances, in effect prior to the effective date of this ordinance, and amending Chapter 29, entitled Land Development Regulations in the form attached as Exhibit A, providing for an expanded and consolidated list of definitions of terms and new zoning and... definition of terms and clarification of powers and duties, establishing a new zoning appeals board, new zoning districts, and a new official zoning map to provide consistency with and implement the city's adopted 2015 year-based comprehensive plan amendments, and more specifically, the 2036 future land use map of the future land use element thereof, updating the consolidated table of permitted uses and the consolidated table of development standards, providing for new transition and sustainability design standards, and more streamlined development-friendly procedural requirements in accordance with the applicable sections of Chapter 163 and 166 of the Florida statutes for 2016, providing for repeal, conflict severability codification, and for an effective date. And before we get into the staff report, I would ask the commission for a motion as follows, that we will address this tonight, section by section. We will open and close the public hearing, section by section.
The term should be article by article.
All right. Article by article?
Yes.
We stand corrected. So we shall do this article by article for the seven articles that are here. We'll open and close the public hearing for each article, allowing each member of the public to speak up to seven times if they so wish, and we will take a vote on each section as we get to it, and then at the end of the night, we'll sum up the tally and see if this is approved or not.
So, can I question? So, if the majority of the sections are approved, is that...
Well...
What happens at the end? I just...
We're going to have to wait till we get to the end to answer that.
Okay.
All right.
So, clarification?
Yes.
Gary Held, outside counsel. The staff report, would that be as to the entire...
We'll allow the staff report to address the entire issue because they're making the comprehensive report.
Just to clarify.
Makes it easier on them.
My question... Should there be questions that arise that we would need input from the consultant or the staff? Is that... Will that be appropriate, that we can address?
Yes, sure.
During the time that we're discussing?
Questions from the commission are always going to be appropriate. All right, so we have the motion summed up. Do you adopt the motion there, Bob? You want to...
I might... So...
All right, second on that?
I second it.
Seconded by Charlie Ernst. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we now have our structure for this evening. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Chair and members of the planning commission, as well as members of the audience. My name is Nixon Lebrun, and I'm the city planner at the Community Planning and Development Department for the city, and also the project manager for the update to the city's land development regulations and zoning map, which is being scheduled before you this evening. The purpose of this agenda item is to hold the required public hearing to receive input from the planning commission and the public on the proposed update to the city of North Miami land development regulations, and to discuss and consider our recommendation to the mayor and city council. This item is on the planning commission meeting agenda in compliance with statutory requirements relating to amendments to the text of the LDRs and all the zoning official map adopted in conjunction therewith. Article 3, Division 10, Section 3-1006 of the LDR requires that all such amendments be delivered to the planning commission for review and recommendation to the mayor and city council for final consideration and approval. Furthermore, authorization for the city to adopt or amend land development regulations is given in the Florida statute, Section 163 dot 3202, at second two, as amended. How did we get here? I mean, on August 2015, this body reviewed and recommended approval with certain revisions of the city's comprehensive plan evaluation and appraisal review based amendment to the mayor and city council. On April 26, 2016, following months of deliberation, the mayor and city council voted unanimously to approve the revised draft of the EUBIS amendments to the comprehensive plan and to subsequently submit them to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity or the State Land Planning Agency for further review pursuant to Section 163 dot 3191 of the Florida statutes. Upon reviewing the city's submitted to ensure the comments from the previously issued objection recommendation and comments report were satisfactorily addressed, the State Land Planning Agency issued a notice of intent on June 23rd, 2016, finding the city's EUBIS amendment in compliance pursuant to Section 163 dot 3184, so paragraph four of the Florida statutes. What were the major changes from the 2015 EUBIS amendments? In addition to responding to changes in state requirements stemming from the 2011 Community Planning Act, the city's recently adopted 2015 EUBIS plan addressed changes in local conditions, specifically in light of the renewed focus on redeveloping the city's downtown and major commercial corridors in order to meet the growing demands for new housing, employment, transportation, entertainment, food, health, and other community needs. Chief among these amendments are two new overlay areas, the planning corridor, development overlay district, or the PCD, which aim to promote high-density mixed-use development with density of up to 100 dwelling units, 125 dwelling units, and width of up to 125 feet along the city's major corridor. And the planned community urban design, PCUD overlay district, which is basically the sole me at all, permit height up to 450 feet or 45 stories in response to market demands and the desire for greater open space. As expected, these new districts call for new transition and design standards, which, along with other development goals and outcomes set forth in the rest of the comprehensive plan, and in order relevant planning instruments adopted by the city councils, such as the downtown master plan, those are... now need to be reflected in the city's LDR and adopted zoning map. In addition, the 2015 EUBIS amendments also provide for new climate change elements, several substantial changes in the density and height permitted along the city's major corridors, as well as certain updates to the future land use map or the future land use element to address land use inconsistencies, and also expand the NRO eastern boundary to further promote redevelopment in the city downtown. What is being proposed tonight? The draft update to the city's LDRs being presented at this meeting is a result of a painstaking collaborative effort between the working group, which is composed of members from the consulting firm of Keaton Schnars, which is present tonight, the firm selected by the city to perform the update, staff from the city's community planning and development department, as well as the city attorney's office, and Mr. Gary Held, Esquire and outside land use attorney retained by the city's attorney's office, to provide additional oversight over the update. This draft incorporates comments garnered at four outreach meetings, held to introduce the update, solicit ideas and concern, and identify key development regulation issues to be addressed during the update process. In addition to the invaluable community input, the draft includes miscellaneous policy recommendations from the working group and from city elected officials in an effort to make the LDRs more development and user-friendly, more suitable to preserve the existing character of certain areas of the city by excluding prejudicial uses, and to provide for the development of the several areas in a manner consistent with the uses for which they are suited, more in keeping with the city police power to protect the public health, safety, order, convenience, comfort, and general welfare, and ultimately, more consistent with the community vision as articulated in the goals, objectives, and policy of the 2015 plan amendments from which the purpose and direction of the LDRs derive. The update has met all of these objectives while providing for the appropriate and responsible use of lands throughout the city and for healthy, attractive, and prosperous North Miami. At this time, I would like to call Ms. Debbie Love from Keaton Schnars to address in greater details the proposed updates and revision to the text of the current LDRs and to the zoning map, and also to answer any question or provide any clarification to the commission and the public. Please do keep in mind that the common staff has garnered from the individual meetings with the commissioners with... earlier this week and last week are being worked on and will be incorporated, along with other input from tonight's meeting, as well as, you know, some typographical correction into the draft that will go to the city council for consideration and approval. Thank you.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Lebrun. Appreciate it. Now I'm on.
I am.
Yes, I am. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Debbie Love. I am the Director of Planning, Public Relations, and Outreach for Keaton Schnars. I'm also the project manager. We have had a great time working with city staff. You have excellent group of folks that have shared their knowledge, their experience with us, along with, as Nixon said, the community in providing their desires and wishes to us during these public forums that we held. As Nixon said, this all began really with your first comprehensive plan. The first real update to the code was done in 2009. That's the first update from 1986-ish, I think, which was pretty amazing. A lot of changes were made to the code at that point. And then you updated the comprehensive plan, you've had some tweaks in between that time, and then you did another major update to the comprehensive plan in 2015, as Nixon said, you adopted it in 2016. So what we did was, we started off with a meeting with staff. Look, tell us what some of the problems that you have been facing just to administer the code. Well, one of the things we always look at is, what kind of variances have you been granting over the years? Because if you have to keep granting the same type of variances, why not fix the code so you're not constantly doing that? What other problems did the staff see that had occurred? And then we turn our attention to the public. And through those community forums that Nixon mentioned, we had really great turnout. We had a lot of people share with us their concerns, their ideas, what problems they've seen, both in as far as getting a permit, but more along the lines of, in addition to that, what the problems were. What do they really want to see the community look like? And so the code now implements, further implements, the comprehensive plan. We did go and do a field review. This is absolutely critical when you write a code. So many times consultants come into a community to write a code, and they've never walked a single street in the community, so they try to take something from someplace else and plop it on top of your city, and many times, it doesn't work as well. So we looked at everything from where you had sidewalks, where you didn't have sidewalks, what were the conditions of the buildings, things like, what were the environmental conditions? Did you have a lot of problems with a lack of parks in neighborhoods? What kind of open space did you all have? So that took us about six weeks of analysis. We spent four days with a full team, walking almost every single street in the city, took a lot of photographs, and brought it back to the team so that we could actually see what was there now, so that as we start applying new regulations, it would fit and it would be appropriate for the area. Well, we started, as Nixon said, in December with the research, the scoping meeting where we got together with staff. We had the public input meetings in January, and then began, came back, and then began the process of the development of the LDRs that you see before you tonight. We delivered a draft initially to staff so that we could all sit down and review it together in March, and now we're here today after tweaking and working with the staff. We have a version that is now here with you tonight for your review and public input. It's also posted, by the way, on the project website. So at those community workshops, what were some of the things that we heard from the public? Well, a lot of things, but let's say that they were crystallized down into these things. Really, we need more affordable housing and more affordable workforce housing in the community. You had a minimum housing size that many people thought was problematic to being able to develop a housing that's affordable. So we looked at that. We looked at your minimum housing requirements. Jobs, creating new jobs and bringing businesses and protecting existing businesses was absolutely critical to the community. Heard this. These are the things we heard that were consistent throughout all the forums. Lighting, when we walked through the city and looked at the existing lighting and inventory of the lighting, we could see why people were talking about it wasn't safe, there wasn't enough lighting, that we needed to bring more lighting, require upgrades to lighting, require businesses to maintain their lighting. Looking at how to protect the waterfront uses, and not just protect, but look at vistas and best uses for the waterfront. Parking, big, big issue throughout the forums. We have very... we have very tough parking standards in the code that may not allow enough flexibility, and so we took a look at that. We also took... while we were doing that, we looked closely at parking structures and the best way to design and build parking structures. A lot of people were concerned about some of the types of uses that were coming into the city or that the city had, particularly this new idea of the medical marijuana dispensaries. That was a big discussion. We had some quite spirited discussion about that particular topic alone. People really wanted us to encourage green building and not just use the LEED green standard, because there's a lot of new standards out there that you should consider. So we've looked at that and made it a little more flexible. Mixed-use regulations were critical because people really believed that the community should have more mixed use. But how it's designed and how it's laid out was also important to the community as well. And we really wanted, the community said, "Look, we really want this, but we want it to be attractive. We want it to look good as far as people coming into the community and that we could enjoy it as well." So the goals for us, as we went back and started, you know, setting this, all these pieces together, was first and foremost, to implement the comprehensive plan. That's critical because state statute says that if your code doesn't match your comprehensive plan, bad city. Bad, bad city. Slap you on the wrist. So we wanted, we need to make sure that that occurred first. And in a certain time period, you had to get this accomplished. So this entire project's been on an expedited track. Promoting economic development, because that was very important to the community, those jobs and protecting businesses. Let's make it easier to permit. Let's make it easy to get through the development process, and that is also something we heard. So that was a big goal for us. And let's take a look at the permitted uses that we allow in the city. The current table that you have was very short, very limited, and required a lot of twisting and turning to try to figure out if something fit in to the permitted use table in those limited categories. So we updated that, adding additional uses to that table, and you'll see that shortly. As Nixon mentioned, it was going to be critical to deal with transitioning, because now you have these higher, more dense buildings closer to the residential neighborhoods. So the community made it very clear, and they offered some great ideas for potential transitioning. Everything from using a canal as a transition area to using, creating stormwater systems that are attractive and could also act as a transition area. Promoting high-quality development, we don't just want the density, we want it to be high quality. So that goes back to the whole green building. It goes back to the design standards... I'm sorry, I thought somebody called me. Sorry. It goes back to those design standards that Nixon mentioned. And as he noted, there's been a lot of new laws that have come about along with some Supreme Court rulings, for example, on signs and on vessels that we needed to incorporate into the code. So, Mr. Chair, at this point, I can give you a summary of each article, or we can walk through something. It is going to be totally up to how... There's a lot to walk through on an individual basis.
Given the situation, let's take the summaries, article by article, as we address them. That way, the discussion is relevant to that article, public understands what that article is, the commission formulates their questions and votes for that article, and then we move to the next article. We get your summary, we get the public input, we have commission discussion, and so on.
Okay, sir.
That might keep everybody focused, so we don't have everybody going off in 10 directions here.
Right, sir.
And a reasonable chance that we'll get done with this before the sun rises in the east.
All right, sir. Beginning with Article 1. Article 1 is your general provisions, where there were really no substantive changes made to Article 1. And we did a lot of cleanup, and what you'll see throughout the document is that the same cleanups occurred. Either outdated statutory language, outdated agency names, we revised the internal department names, made those corrections, and you'll see that throughout the document. And that was typical of what happened in Article 1. Now, in Article 2, this is where you talk about all of your, describe all of your decision-making bodies. So before we go into that, how did you want to address the, anything in Article 1? Any comments or anything in Article 1 before I move on to Article 2, sir?
Well, let's take Article 1 first. We'll open the public hearing, let the people speak to Article 1. We'll close the public hearing. We'll have commission discussion, take a vote on Article 1, and if that works, we'll move into Article 2.
Yes, sir.
And try to move this process in some logical manner and try and get us home. So with that in mind, at this time, we will open the public hearing as to Article 1 general provisions and invite anyone wishing to speak to Article 1 general provisions. You are welcome to come up and make your input. Bear in mind, this is a board of record, so we allow one speaker at a time, and we ask you that you limit your comments to three minutes on Article 1. Do we have anyone wishing to speak to Article 1? Last call on Article 1, and seeing no one coming forward, we close the public hearing as to Article 1. At this time, the chair opens for commission discussion on Article 1.
My only, my only point, I think, as we move forward, I think Article 1 is fairly benign in no changes, and it's...
It's good practice, yes.
It's good practice, good place to start.
Yes.
But as we go through this, I think that staff needs, as we get to whatever section or article we get to, I think for the public, staff needs to explain what that is and what changes are put in place.
I think they'll do that. I think we can ask for that.
And a question is, we've spent hours over the last week, if you will, with individual meetings with staff, and there was a lot of things in this book that were everything from typos to what was that all about, and things that needed to be corrected and changed. Are we going to relitigate all of that again, or is there some...
Is that being...
Because that was ours.
I believe staff already explained that those typos and other issues that were brought out as a result of the meetings will be corrected in the next edition before it gets to city council.
So we don't have to go through...
We don't need to relitigate that part, no.
Well, my question would be, can we get... Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, mister.
My question being on that is, we had discussions, but they didn't go into public record with what we saw, and I guess what I'm looking for is confirmation that the changes and the corrections were made from staff. So somehow, we have to have some discussion with staff and get their reply as to the fact that they've gone ahead and initiated the changes that we saw, even though minor. Somehow, we need to get that confirmed, that those were...
So that turns into a final product when it moves forward.
Right.
I understand this is a process leading to that final product. So, Mr. Next, can you tell us...
Permission to address the chair, Your Honor.
Yes.
As counsel for city staff, we... I was in on those briefings with city staff, and what we decided is that the large majority of the issues that were brought to our attention were scrivener's errors and typos, as Mr. Pashon indicated. Those things that were typo, typographical errors, scrivener's errors, we would make those changes automatically with no further discussion. That stuff that city staff, if we had caught it, we would have made those changes before it even made it into your books. However, issues of concern such as Article 2, board composition, those controversial issues will be left for discussion for this evening.
As written.
Exactly.
Jennifer, like we brought up the street names and all that, that's...
That's a typographical scrivener's error.
Okay.
So that will be automatically taken care of. But anything controversial, anything deemed...
Policy-related.
Exactly. Anything policy-related, we would like that discussion to occur in the public and for there to be public comment on that before any decisions are made as far as modification to that language.
And that's fine.
All right. Thank you. Now, Bob, does that answer your question?
Absolutely.
All right, so let's move this as quickly as we can. Mr. Ernst, do you have any input as to Article 1?
No, sir, I do not.
Mike?
None.
None? All right, Ms. Boulay?
Yeah.
Jason? Bob, in which case the chair calls for motion on Article 1.
Official step.
All right, Mr. Eich moves to accept Article 1. Do we have a second? Seconded by Jason James. All in favor?
Aye.
Article 1 is passed. All right. Article 2 deals with decision-making and administrative bodies.
Right.
Now, you may proceed with your explanation.
Okay, sir. Thank you so much. Okay, sir. Thank you so much for that. The major changes here in this particular article is related to the duties and responsibilities of the Planning Commission. It also, we also pulled in the downtown and action plan advisory committee into the code. We created a new zoning appeals board, and as I said, there were some new qualifications for both the Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustment. And again, you'll see that whole, I'm not gonna keep repeating this, but you'll see corrections throughout of department names as well. And that was it for me for the high points for that, for the changes for that particular article.
All right, then at that ti, this time, we'll open the public hearing as to Article Two. Anyone wishing to speak to Article Two is invited to step forward. Please keep it to three minutes if you can.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Thank you for your service. My name is Kevin Burns, 2065 Al Amanda Drive. Some of you may remember that I was the former mayor of this city.
We distantly remember that, yes.
Yes. And the plan that was redone in 2000 and adopted in 2009 was under my administration, and you all, many of you serving up there still, were part of that. I find it offensive, embarrassing, that the city tells you, you all are not capable of making a planning decision. The audacity to say, "You don't have to be a resident, you don't have to be a property owner, or a person who has ties to North Miami, you can come in and make decisions based what's good for our community and not?" That the experience that you all have, whether I agree with you or disagree with you, I know that you have the best interests of the city. Bob, I don't always agree with you, but I know your heart is in the right place, and I wouldn't want anybody else up there from downtown Miami or Brickell making a decision for you and I who live in the same neighborhood. Only one of you up there would be qualified today. It's disappointing. If you, if the staff and the manager's office wants to say, "We're encouraging realtors, architects, engineers," that's an added thing that council people over the years have looked for? You represent each council person, you are appointed by a council person. So it's up to that council person to pick the best person from North Miami, and what that council person thinks is best for their district and their representation on this board. I think it is wrong to say that you do not have to be a resident of North Miami. I think it is wrong to say you have to have a qualification. Kevin has some of the, Cyfre has some of the best knowledge. Charles, you have some of the best knowledge and most point-on discussions over the years I've ever seen. The new members, Peggy, you guys, and Jason, you guys are point-on, you bring up the concerns of your neighbors, 'cause you live in this community every day. And Kenny, you enforce the laws, you're the chief of police in this community all these years. You know every back alley, you know everything going on in this community. I don't want a lobbyist, or a lawyer, or somebody connected from downtown or Fort Lauderdale, who says somebody can't live in Broward County, and come in and make decision for the residents and the businesses of North Miami. We cannot have that. You all, don't vote yourself out of a job, don't vote the people in the future out of a job, not a job, but their community's service. I wouldn't want anybody else other than residents of North Miami making this decision for us. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Did we have any other comments from the public? Calling once, calling twice. Here we no further comments. Public hearing on this point is closed. Now it's time for commission discussion. I'll start with my right, Mr. Ernst.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I get to lead this off, and I'm sure every one of us on this board will have something to say about this. We, we met with...
Yeah, you are, you are.
Oh.
I know I have to leave in here.
We have a redevelopment of this day as we need our microphones.
Really?
Not to mention more chairs.
Let me, again, repeat myself. I'm sure the sentiment is equal among this board, and we, we certainly echo Mr. Burns' concerns with regards to having citizens' input in advisory boards. We, we met with, most of us met with city manager, Mr. Springs, and I also voiced my displeasure with the idea that we would have non-residents and citizens of this community not serve on an advisory capacity. I, I respect Mr. Spring's determination to have the best people on the board that have knowledge of, of issues, but as far as I'm concerned, we have to look into our city and the residents to make those choices, not from the outside. And those people should live, and they should be the taxpayers of this city. They should be those who have a pulse of what's going on. And I, I too have a fear of, of independent lobbyists who have no vested interest whatsoever in this community. I, I think it, it, it's a bit of a, an indictment on, on democracy, that we don't have citizens' voice on these, these panels. And the idea just, I'm appalled, frankly, that, that it was considered to strike the language in this article. Just, you know, it's, I, I would hope that the rest of my fellow members of the commission would not ask, but demand that we reinsert the language that says that each member shall be a resident of the city, and also that the members shall be chosen, or I'm sorry, and that any members who ceases to be a resident within the city during the term of office, should be asked to resign or be deemed to have resigned as of the date of moving from the city. So, to me, that, that should stay, and it should never have been thought about striking from that section with regards to what makes up the membership of this committee. And along with that, there is also another board, the Board of Adjustment, which is now under the same, would also be affected by the same thing. And I would ask that we also reinsert the language that each member shall be a resident of the city, and also upon adoption of, and that the same language, that any member who ceases to reside within the city limits during the term of office shall be deemed to have resigned as of the date of moving from that city. So anything that was crossed out of that article pertaining to membership and residence should be reinserted in that article. That's my, my feeling on that, Mr. Chairman, and I welcome to hear any other opinion on that from any one of our board members.
We'll move down line and ask each person in turn.
Mr. Chair?
All right.
If I can. So, following the briefings, I was asked to draft some language that would be responsive to this concern. And not only to restore the language to the way it was, but to add additional language, and it's totally within your discretion, it's a policy choice, as to whether some form of work within the city would also qualify somebody for appointment. And I have a definition of the term "work," which would include ownership of all or part of a business. So I can read that for your consideration, or you can discuss just restoring the language to the way it was.
Let's get everybody to, to voice their opinions, then I'll, I'll give you mine, and then we'll invite your language, and we'll, we'll discuss that. All right. Mr. McGearmade?
Yeah, I, I concur wholeheartedly. I think it's very, very important that the citizens of this committee be very involved in the process of the city and the development of the city. I think that citizens of the, I think a board such as this is more diverse, which is important. I think that they have more of an ear and an eye to what community standards are and where community standards are moving or want to go. As a matter of fact, in my meeting, I actually made a comment that the Architectural Review Committee, which is part of the staff process, also include, you know, citizens to be part of the Architectural Review Committee, which is a staff position, which really dictates or directs a lot of the development within the city, and/or make the Planning Commission also serve as the Architectural Review Committee, and the things related to that. But I'm in full concurrence with Mr. Ernst, and do we really want real estate agents and land developers to run where the direction of the city is going? So, you know, yes, I, I agree with you, Mr. Ernst.
All right, Mr. Eich?
Ditto. I, I agree.
That's...
I, I... The Design Review Committee, I brought that up. I thought that we should have a Design Review Committee in addition to the city staff. Maybe you want more qualifications on that than the Planning Commission, but I, I do agree. I thought that was absolutely preposterous. What, what next? On the personnel board, do we have all attorneys that study personnel law, human resource specialists, or other members of the community? You know, we have a lot of institutional knowledge up here. And I've lived in this city since 1970. I've worked here since 1970, like the former mayor said. I know every alley, every street, you name it. I've seen the changes, good, bad, and ugly, and, and I think I have a lot to contribute. And because I don't have a title of an architect or an engineer, well, I'm the chief of police. I served here for 27 years. I'm a resident. I lived here for 40 years. I think that has some bearings. You know, I can remember starting off with the SECTAB, Crime Reduction Through Environmental Design. I remember when I was the traffic sergeant, I know the traffic flows of the city, closing off streets. I remember when we fought to get Keystone Point as guard gates. I mean, this is all important. This is all part of the demographics of the city and the development of the city. And I just thought this was gross to be fair. And I, I agree. And the same thing with the Board of Adjustment. The staff, God bless them, they don't, most of them don't live here. They leave at the end of the day. We live here. We should have a voice in our community. That's the essence of democracy. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Belay?
Good evening. Can you all hear me? I agree with my fellow commissioners. I understand that we can be a bit particular and meticulous when various things are brought to our attention, but it's because we live here. We take pride in our city. And to hear that, that language was, or is up for debate, or being, getting ready to be stricken from this document, it's, is very offensive. It feels like what we've had to say, or the opinions that we've shared, the concerns that we've expressed to you all, or those, the powers that be that created this document, wasn't appreciated, it wasn't received well, or that we just weren't doing a good enough job. As I stated before, this is, this is my city. This is the city that I grew up in. This is the city that I would walk to the park in. I would go to the corner store. Graduation, I got ready with my fellow neighbors, and we all walked out together. I mean, all of my memories are in this city. So if I am sharing concerns of my fellow neighbors, as well as myself, my parents, who have been longtime residents of this city, I should hope that it's being appreciated and put into good words, so that we too can realize the, the true potential, see the true, the true potential of our city being realized as we drive into our city. I think one of our, I think Mr. Eich said, when most of the residents leave, they go on to their cities, Miramar, and North Miami Beach, and Pembroke, and wherever else they live. But we drive right on down 125th, 135th, West Dixie, and so on. So I, I think our opinions need to be valued. Stricken the, the language from this document doesn't sit well with me. So, and I also believe that it should, it should also not be removed from the Board of Adjustments as well. So...
All right, thank you, Ms. Belay. Mr. James?
Yes, good evening. I, I agree. I think, I really think that the people who understand where the direction of this board and, and everything that's gonna happen on a macro level for the city, it really does need to be someone who's here, be a resident of the city. You know, we use all the infrastructure, we use all the, you know, go to our, our local businesses. I mean, I really feel like it's, it's, it's pretty obvious that that's the way we, we should keep it that way. And it should, it should be kept in the code, that particular section.
All right, thank you. Mr. Pichon?
Yeah, first, let me say, I think it's always awkward when the members of an organization are asked to discuss and decide on the qualifications of the members of the organization. But having said that, I think there's a discussion that could be had there, but without, I think it's almost hard to disagree with the fact that a residency requirement should be mandatory. It's mandatory for our elected officials. It's, I don't want somebody coming in from another city and says, "Well, this is how we do it over there," and they spend three hours a week in our city. So either a resident, or a business owner, or a principal in a business, however you want to define that, so somebody who's got a vested interest in the success of the city of North Miami should be a requirement for being on this board. And as far as the requirements of the members of the board, again, it's that awkward situation, but I've hired hundreds of people in my business career. And with the exception of specific requirements, like a lawyer, or CPA, I need, other than that, the discipline that they stud, people studied in school was interesting and helpful, but I was looking for smart people that were prepared to do the work and could collaborate with other people. And that's who I wanted in my team. And I think that's who the city of North Miami wants on their Planning Commission. People who have a vested interest in the outcome, and are smart and will do the work. Having said that, there's another point in this section that I'd like to speak to. Sec, Division Six, I guess, it says the city manager should be the chief administrative officer of the city of North Miami with ultimate authority over, and the old words were the implementation of the LDRs. And the change in the language says the interpretation of the LDRs. Sorry, did I move out of the section?
It's still, it's still the same article, so...
I'm still in Section Two.
Yeah, you're, you're still Section Two. It's two dash six oh one.
Page nine.
Nine.
Page nine. Section Two, Division Six, Section Two. It says, "We've granted the city manager the authority to interpret the LDRs," which I'm not so sure was what anybody ever wanted. And then by virtue of the adoption of the LDRs, that authority is now delegated to the Planning and Development Department. So we've rolled in, we've rolled from, from implementation to interpretation and the delegation of interpretation. And this has got nothing to do with the people in the current roles, 'cause I don't know who they're gonna be in several years, but I don't know that that de facto delegation all the way down to the planning staff is appropriate. So I object to that. Anyway, that's what I've got to say on this.
All right, well, that's interesting. Okay. We'll go back to our board attorney. Now, you've heard the comments of the commissioners. None of them support a non-resident serving on the board. Oddly, I have a slightly different take on that. I, I think there needs to, I, I think it would be advantageous going forward for us to try and take advantage of the most qualified people we can find when they're willing to serve on the board. And for that reason, I would favor some kind of allowance for someone who has a particular business and/or is employed full-time in the city for as long as they have the business and they work full-time. for as long as they have the business and they work full-time in the city. We don't have, for example, an architect or a landscape designer on the board, and these are specialized areas that would make this, I think, long-term, a better board if we had those specialties. We do have an engineer. We have a law enforcement specialist. We have business professionals here. We have media professionals up here, but we are missing the architect and design specialties on this board. And we have terribly few architects and, and landscape designers who actually live in the city. And I would favor some language that would provide some reasonable leeway for such a person to be added to the board, so long as they continue to own the business and be employed full-time while they're in the city. Once they move out, then, of course, their board membership terminates, as same it was with, with any resident. Uh, I don't know if the members of the Planning Commission would, would be so inclined to consider that, but I'd like to have that discussion.
I mean, I agree with you as far as adding it, but don't take out the previous language. So if you're, if you're adding it, that's fine with me.
As an exception, if, if they're qualified-
Yes.
-and own the business and work full-time in the city.
Exactly, but, but then when we say own a business for how long? Because someone can buy a business and a few months later, um, during an, an election season, then they get appointed, and that person may not have a true vested interest in the city, but because technically they are a business owner, they, um, are able to be appointed. So we would have to give a timeframe. We would have to have some serious speculations there, or, um, specifications there as to what would, um, make them qualified.
Well, that's where we look at certain specialized qualifications with their consideration. Yes, Mr. McGurmid.
Well, um, in, in piggybacking on what Peggy said and what you said as well, if we had somebody who lived in the city, number one, who was interested in serving on the Planning Commission, number two, and happened to be an architect, number three, I'm sure that he would get the same vetting as any other citizen in the city. Um, also, in addition, I, I've known, uh, I've been in the title insurance business for a long time. I've worked with a lot of developers, and I've worked with a lot of architects, and I can tell you, there's some very, very good architects. There's very, very good attorneys. Uh, we have several very, very good attorneys sitting in our audience. Um, but at the same time, I've known very bad attorneys who've given very bad advice and guidance. I've known architects that have been off the wall with, um, you know, their suggestions of what they think looks good, um, and where things should be. So I don't think being, being a, an architect or, um, being an attorney or being a developer provides anybody with any additional, um, expertise, um, at the level of where we are, um, as try, as citizens to try and make, um, you know, the best decisions on behalf of the city. If they're available, and if they are residents, and if they want to serve, certainly. I, I think that, and they made those wishes known to the, um, um, to the individual council people, um, I'm sure that they would be certainly, you know, up to be appointed. Uh, but to try and single them out as to having a specific skill may not necessarily, um, be some sort of panacea for whatever problems are perceived, and I don't really think that we've really had any, the Planning Commission has made any great glowing errors in the procedures that they've done, uh, up to this point.
Do we have any other?
Uh, you may. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Each.
We mentioned several times, um, the need for a Design Review Committee. Now, we already have one with the staff. It's a Staff Review Committee. Okay, that's at, um, Section Seven Oh Two on page ten. Okay, they're made up of various departments: police, parks, public works. But like you mentioned earlier, we don't have a citizen on that. I think that board, correct me if I'm wrong, I have to defer to staff, but the other cities that have a Design Review Board, I believe those people have a lot more expertise in the field of architecture, engineering, and so forth and so on, and maybe that's where we wanna place people with that pedigree and form a Design Review Board. I mean, right now, it goes to staff, and that's the last, the last hurrah. Doesn't come back to the, uh, doesn't come back to the people. And I had, you, you'll see it under Section Two Membership, which is all one and good, but I, I, I had discussed it with staff a couple of times about the, the need for Desi- Design Review Committee. I believe Miami Beach has one, and, uh, you know, I don't know about North Miami Beach.
And I'm sure, following up on that, Mr. Each, uh, I'm sure staff would welcome that, just as much as they would welcome, uh, their idea of wanting to have those, those types of individuals on our, or, or participate in the planning process. Uh, perhaps, uh, there should be some rewrite within that Mr. Each has brought out, that architects, engineers, ex- professionals that are more involved in the, the review of, of design should, should be incorporated somehow within that committee.
Citizens, you mean?
Yeah, residents.
But ha- have that additional pedigree, or if they need it. I, I don't know, I don't know the composition of Miami Beach's, uh, Design Review Board. I don't know if they're all architects, engineers.
I actually just looked it up in case you asked that question. So.
Okay.
What is the answer?
Okay, so the Miami Beach Design Review Board is composed of seven regular members, consists of two architects, uh, an architect registered in Santa Clara, or a member of the faculty of the School of Architecture, Urban Planning, or Urban Design, uh, with practical or academic experience in the field of design, planning, historic preservation, or history of architecture, or a professional practicing in the field. One landscape architect, registered in the state, and one architect registered in the, in the United States, or a professional practicing in the fields of architecture, urban design, or urban planning, and two citizens at large.
There you go.
And so the architects themselves do not need to be residents of the city?
No, that's not a requirement. Correct.
That's on your, that's on your Development Review Committee.
Design Review Board.
And it does include Board. That would be past the Development Review Committee.
Yeah, so that does include two citizens.
I would, I would have, I would have no problem with that, Mr. Chairman, um, with regards to looking at that Development Review Committee. I will stead- uh, will hold steady on my objection of deleting the language, though, however, with the Planning Commission and the, um, and the Board of Adjustment. Um, and, and, uh, just to add to that, um, the city commission and the council has all the right when they, when it comes around to, to making their choices for this, for this board. It's, it's their obligation, I feel, that they find the right people to put on there if they're not satisfied. It's their prerogative. They have that right to do that. So, having, having said that, um, I don't feel that there needs to be language put in there telling them that they have to make that decision. That's up to them as, as a leader of this community to make the right decision when they choose people they wanna put on the board, and try to overlook political favors, or, or, um, you know, something that would be beneficial, uh, not to the city, but maybe to themselves or to a particular issue. Um, try not to polit- politicize it. Um, there, there's a fine line. I, I understand that. When they assign somebody that's a citizen, um, who's to say that they voted for that person or they didn't. The ideal situation is that members of this board is apolitical. They look at the issues. They don't play politics. And when I, I would expect that the city council would also look at it that way when we make our decisions, not as political decisions, but as decis- decisions by a body that looks at the entirety of the issue and makes the right choice, not a political choice.
Looking at and striking both the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Commission narrative the way it's written now.
That would, that would seem to be the position of the commission to strike the two of those and go back to the original language. What I would propose to the commission, and for those of you up here who have longer memories, the Planning Commission, over the years, has numerous times requested a Design Review Board in the city, and those requests for the last decade at least, as far as I can remember, consistently seem to fall on deaf ears. I think this might be the right opportunity for this commission to ask the commission attorney to specifically draft a paragraph that creates a Design Review Board and stick it in here, and let the city council vote it down if they so choose, and adopting the language essentially from Miami Beach, because one of our, our biggest gripes over the buildings that have come before us, when they've shown us their designs, has been the lack of imagination and creativity in the design process. And if there's one thing we have found time and time again, architects don't try very hard to design really nice buildings in North Miami. There, there's no challenge here. We, we'll rubber stamp any little box they give us, you know? And given that we are now somewhere on the cusp of a train station the next couple of years, I, I repeatedly have the, these dreams of someone constructing something that actually is reminiscent of a cigar box from the nineteen forties. Not very inventive, but a nice little box into which you can cram twenty people at a time, when in fact, we really could do something a lot more challenging. The absence of a Design Review Board would seem to open the door for the cheapest, smallest, least practical building we could get away with, rather than something that would actually make a serious statement for the city. And I would ask the commission to consider, uh, the request that we move for a Design Review Board to be added to this article, and following the pattern of Miami Beach. They have some interesting buildings, not as many as maybe we'd like, but at least their lifeguard stations get a lot of publicity, and some of their other buildings have actually been really, really outstanding work. Uh, North Miami doesn't have anything that even comes remotely close to a building of architectural significance, and it's sadly missing in this city. And if we're going to be a city of progress in any way, shape, or form, we need to raise the bar. And if we don't choose to do it through the Planning Commission, then maybe we can agree to request another section be added to this that creates a Design Review Board. We, we're not going to find a lot of architects and landscape designers currently living in the city, but if we get better design and review standards, maybe we will get these people to move into our city and make it more desirable as a design element. And I would like to know how you feel about that. This may be the one opportunity to insert such an appropriate paragraph and send it up the, the ladder and see if they would approve it. Uh, I'll ask that question and move to my left. Ms. Blay, what is your thinking on that?
I agree.
And Mr. James?
Well, I wanna, I wanna ask a question, so.
Go ahead.
Are we, are we saying that on top of having someone added from the Planning Commission to the Design Review Committee, that we also now wanna create another board?
Well, the, the Design Review would be a separate board made up of architects and landscape architects. These would be design professionals to look at a builder's building to see if, in fact, he's really doing the best job that he can do, or is he just building down and dirty to make it cheap?
Okay, and so, who, who would be, who, who would appoint, just to say?
Well, the City Council obviously has to make all the appointments. We don't appoint to the board. The city would have to agree to adopt the concept, and then they'd have to make a public search to find people to fill out the board. This is the challenge. We put down the gauntlet to them to see if they wanna move in that direction. We've been asking for this for over a decade, and, and nobody's picked up on it. So this may be the opportunity to put this in black and white.
So then what would be advantage of having, appointing somebody, um, to the, their Design Review Committee?
I don't think we should.
Well, you're, you're missing the point. You're missing the point. The Planning Commission doesn't look at building design. That's nothing, we, we don't deal with that.
Correct. Okay, 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 okay.
See, we don't look at the design. That never comes to us.
Okay.
You see, so what we're proposing is a Design Review Board that would hopefully hold an architect's feet to the fire on the aesthetics and construction of the project. Yes, how's it really going to look, and, and what kind of traffic flow are we really going to get? You understand, there's always a better way to do things.
Right, but then now, we, I, one of the things that I think I brought up is that we're trying to make the permitting process easier. So it's like we're adding-
That's a separate, separate section. Let's not go there yet. We're not permitting, okay? This is Section Two. Keep it to Section Two. And a Design Review Board challenges for better design. Something that we're not getting currently.
It would be part of the process, I would think, that once a plan, uh, if I'm not correct, feel free to jump in here, Mr. Nixon. If I'm not correct, when they bring you a plan, uh, submit a plan in, in the process, um, currently, a committee or, or staff looks at that d- design, is that not correct?
Yes, uh, you're right, Commissioner. And, uh, cur- currently, what we do when we receive a site plan, we send it to our architectural peer review, uh, that we have, you know, on board, you know, a firm. They're doing, for the peer review, but, I mean, I take, you know, if we have to have a Design Review Board, that would substitute for that, 'cause it, I don't think that would slow down the process itself, 'cause we still have to have it vetted by an outside, you know, uh, architectural firm. I guess, do this probably would, uh, substitute for that.
And, and, and to carry a, a bit further, maybe some of you may disagree, I think that board could be made up of people that aren't, not necessarily residents of the city.
And then-
They're, they're experts who are-
They're chosen for their-
Oh, they're chosen, they're chosen for their qualification. That, those, that decision eventually comes to us, or to the, I won't say us, I will say to the planning board.
And, and also, eh, not, eh, to go back to Mr. James' point, eh, so we do have to establish the procedural requirements also, 'cause, and, uh, when they submit, if they don't get an approval from that board, you know, where do they go? And does that, you know, slow down the process, stop the process? Eh, and then, so we have to work all those kinds also.
Well, where do they go now?
It's not something that we have to deal with and rate, yeah, we can establish-
We can establish it.
Ask for it and see what happens.
And so what, what I'm assuming is happening, we're paying for that outside peer review right now?
No, I mean, the, the applicant pays for it, yeah.
And so they're probably only looking for the minimum, you know, building code standards. They're not really looking for anything beyond-
I mean, I mean, they're some pretty reputable architectural firms, so.
They're not challenging the design process. That's the difference. It's not necessarily adversarial. It is, say, well, you could have done this instead of that. And, and that's what's missing. There is no design challenge.
Right.
Okay.
And we see that in the architecture we're currently getting in the city. There's an absence of design challenge.
And, and may I, may I ask, if I could ask, uh, Mr. Halt-
Land, yeah.
-with your experience with Miami Beach, is it a, a fact that that, that board can basically persuade or encourage a better design on a plan that's submitted that may not necessarily be very attractive, but that board looks at it and says, "Look, it could be done better"? How do they, you know, based on, on your knowledge, how do they adjust to that, or how do they deal with that when it's brought?
Well, they, they actually discuss the design, uh, qual- the quality of the design, uh, and if they don't agree with it, they just don't approve it. Now, let me just suggest some things. What, what this does is adds to the cost of development. And while in Miami Beach, the homes are larger, and there's a lot of, uh, money that is available to support this kind of process, there are some cities that have different processes for commercial buildings and for single-family homes. So, for example, if you wanted to not create a burden for the single-family homeowner, you could allow them to go through the staff process, but create a Design Review Board for commercial buildings.
And then I think this would make perfectly good sense.
And that's a good point. That's a very good point.
All right, can we, can we roll with that?
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's a great idea. I also think it goes in the next section, which is the General Development and Review Procedures.
Well, we can take that a section at a time.
We can take that when we get to that.
We don't have to define all the procedures, but let's get the- We don't have to define all the procedures, but let's get the concept down.
Yeah.
Well, by the time we get to that, half the board will be getting social security.
Well, likely may be.
I understand, but that's why I think if we do this, the, the attorney was gonna speak to us about some suggested changes in the language about where the bigger bone of contention was.
Right, but I'm saying on this point for a moment, on residency, I wanted to clarify that there is a residency requirement um, on the Miami Beach Design Review Board. And if I can share that with you.
Yes.
So it, it reads, "All regular members shall reside in or have the primary place of business in the county." Um, and the two citizens at large and one of the registered landscape architects, registered architects or professionals, um, shall be residents of the city.
I think that's a very good model.
To buy the
It's, it's a good model to start with if we have the qualifications currently in the city. If we don't, then we may wanna make that incremental in say five years hence. Uh, see what happens, because when we do these LDRs, it's every seven years and we wait and see what happens in seven years.
Well, it could be also something like was being proposed for your board and the board of adjustment, that if uh, if no professional is available within the city, they could expand
Yeah, there you go.
I, that would be the appropriate.
That's actually not what the language says. We talked about that, because once you eliminate the residency requirement, then you go, if you can't find anybody that meets these standards, you can expect somebody else. And in the absence of a residency requirement, it will be impossible not to find somebody that meets the background.
Well, but then again, you're creating a highly specialized and technical board.
Exactly.
Mr. Chairman?
And so that's appropriate, yes.
Yeah, I, I think, um, I think that, um, that's a great suggestion. Cause you have residency on three of the members of the board.
Yeah.
The two citizens and the one architect. So you have resident, you have residential requirements for three of the board. Um, and then the others can, if they are resident
From the county.
Or from the county. I, I think that's a great model if we follow that with those few modifications. And then that would come to the planning commission that we could, you know, is the second issue, which is rolling back to where the old language was rather than the current language.
Right, well, you probably wanna vote on these separately.
Yes.
Um, and you can probably combine the planning commission and the board of adjustment.
I, I think that would be appropriate and then we get to this architectural review board and see about that goes, alright.
Right.
Let's go ahead and take that. The chair will call for a motion to roll back the language relative to planning commission and the board of adjustment.
So it would be a motion.
Point, point.
I'm sorry, if I may. I, I think, I think our team wanted to suggest, uh, some alternate language. I would at least like to hear it.
Did you have alternate language on this?
Well, it dealt with the, the work issue as to whether it was either a resident or somebody who worked within the city. I didn't get broad consensus, a feeling of broad consensus on the resident commission on that.
No, we're talking about planning commission and board of adjustment. You either roll back the language to what it was or you modify it to permit someone who is fully employed in the city.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, can I make a motion to do that?
You may, you make what you feel is a proper motion, uh, that we roll back the language to the old language as it was. Okay.
Uh, I'd like to second that with a question or clarification.
Well, we'll ask the clarification first.
Clarification is that all language that was added regarding residency is, is stricken, because there's two parts to that. Not only each member should be a resident, but also the fact that, um, um, should they leave, should they leave, uh, the city, they can no longer be on the commission.
Which is the way it should be, right?
Right, we're rolling back on that language.
Yes, both of those sections is what we're talking about.
Should we go?
That would be fine. That's, that's clarification. Mike, do you accept that?
I accept the amendment, yes.
I believe we were adding the, the language about military.
That's already in, that's already in there. That's already been added.
Okay.
So we don't need to vote on that separately. That's, that's in there. We've asked for that and they've done that. Alright, so we have a motion, uh, made by Mike McGee, made seconded by Mr. Ernst Rall in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And to clarify, that was right for both boards, planning commission and board of adjustment.
Now we address the concept of the architectural design and review board, which we would really, I think, we're in agreement up here that we'd like to see that added in as an additional board. Try to raise the standard a little bit.
Now, what, would that be under Article three now or?
It comes under two and then it, it affects other articles as we get on the road, but you gotta get it in on two and then you know, we address it as it was, we get to it.
Is that, is that an addendum or can it be added into, um, section two dash seven oh one?
We would create a new division. We call it designer review board. And there's, there's about a dozen different sections that deal with first the composition, powers and duties.
Right.
And, uh, then there's designer review criteria and a procedure.
Okay.
Um, and I would follow as closely as possible to Miami Beach.
Yeah.
Understanding that you have a unique situation and I would try and tailor it to North Miami.
Alright.
So, and it, and it would probably, um, not a concern, but just, um, clarify that in effect it could show al- it'll also show up in other articles other than the article that it's, it's, um, being introduced into article.
Parts of it will appear in subsequent sections.
Yes, like, uh, Article three is development review procedures, so part of it would be in there.
Do you, do you do that as an addendum to each section?
It would be probably another, another division that we would add.
Alright, so let's have a motion to approve the, uh, the request for the, uh, architectural design and review board. See added. Um, yes, Mike?
Yes, can I, I second with an amendment that it
Well, we haven't had a motion made yet.
Yeah, yeah, he did.
Okay, can he each moves?
And it meant that it, that it structurally follow the Miami Beach, um, design.
Alright.
However, are you accepting my suggestion that we do this for commercial buildings and that the single family?
Right.
If the commercial takes hold, maybe in twenty years, residential would follow, but we have to first get ahold of commercial.
Yeah, right.
Let's, let's say we have a developer that's gonna come in, they're gonna build thirty townhouses. Yeah, that should go to a review, review board, but a single family house? No, I don't, I don't see, I don't see that.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Duplex, I don't see.
As a reminder, for consistency purposes, some things are exempt only to, that's applicable, only to non-residential or multifamily. So for consistency purposes, one may, might suggest that it be expanded to multifamily development, so it's consistent throughout the document.
Okay.
Alright, I, I think we can accept that. I'll agree, right, Mike?
Yes, yep, yep.
Alright, so we've got a motion for design review board that affects multifamily and commercial, exempting residential, okay? So that, that's, we rank the language and carry it throughout all the sections of this, then we have a viable entity if we convince the city council to move in that direction.
It would be exempting single-family duplex and townhouse residential.
Right.
Right.
When you say townhouse, that went.
By the, by an, an individual owner.
Okay, okay.
Okay, alright, Bob, how do we feel about that?
I'm fine with that.
And Jason?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Belay? Alright, then the chair will call for a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Alright, so now finally.
Sir?
Uh, eh, one of the questions that staff has, you know, eh, in creating that board, you know, I mean, would they report to, is that the DRC now reports to the CPND, planning commissions, you know, higher level works independently from the, from the staff. So we need to establish this criteria and when, in the powers and duties of that board also.
I believe that we, we've addressed that in that he's gonna mirror this in the way Miami Beach operates.
So they, they would be equal to the board of adjustment and the planning commission.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Alright, so we, we've finally gotten a step closer to one of our stated goals over the last decade or two of getting the design review board going.
Yes.
But that
Would there be just further comments on the city manager, the language change?
I can hear one at a time. Bob?
Oh, I'm sorry. The language changed, the change in language for the city manager's interpretation of the LDRs.
Oh, can I comment on that, sir?
Yes, you can comment on that. That's a separate point.
Okay, so, so that suggestion actually came in part for me. I don't know that I had, I can take full credit for it, but
Or blame, as the board may feel, but yes, go ahead.
So the concept is that the planning director is normally the, the administrative official in a local government that is responsible for interpreting and enforcing the land development regulations. In this city, it was the city manager by operation of your code. So there were two issues to deal with. One was the scope of the responsibilities and whether the planning director played any role. Um, so it, so on, on the scope, it seemed appropriate to make this consistent with other local governments, that whoever was going to be interpreting and enforcing, that it be spelled out in the code. So interpretation, enforcement and implementation. You can't implement without interpreting. And, and the city attorney was just responsible for the legal issues of interpreting, which we have kept, but also gave him some enforcement responsibility, which made sense since he would be prosecuting, uh, violations. Right, so that was the first issue of clarifying the scope of authority. Then it, it seemed appropriate that rather than just saying city manager or designee, which could be any director, that we actually identify the director of community planning and development as the person who enforces your LDRs, because that is the traditional role. So you have that person, but the city manager in a supervisory role over that person, which gives you some, it should give you some comfort that there's some oversight structurally in your code. So that was the
So is someone to complain if they don't like the initial conversation? Yes, I understand. Alright, um, pleasure of the board on this point?
Well, but are we saying that, um, Bob, Bob, what is your, what is your main? Like this is the concept of it? Is it, is it the fact that?
I guess that we've got, yeah, the, the interpretation and the delegation of the interpretation of the LDRs. I, I'm just not comfortable with the way that, the way that plays out. It's, uh, we, there's a lot of hard fought decisions that get made to decide what goes into the LDRs. And then tomorrow morning, we all have delegated the interpretation of that to someone else, not the implementation, but
Are you concerned that decisions that this commission would make are not being honored?
The city council would make. I mean, whatever, whatever goes into the final LDRs.
They have superior jurisdiction over the issues that they deal with. So I would be shocked for a planning director or city manager to take a position that's contrary to something that the city council has just ruled on. That by virtue of their being the governing body, it, it's a supremacy issue. They are responsible, primarily responsible. And this just lays out their interpretation. We could always say subject to such rulings of other boards or the city council or other boards, something like that.
Mr. Halt?
Yes, yes.
Excuse me, sir. May I add something to, to this conversation? Um, the biggest challenge in writing a code or administering a code is the fact that it doesn't take away, we don't, you're, the powers and duties of the planning commission are spelled out. Powers and duties of the city council are spelled out. This does not take away from or override any of their decision-making at all. What this does is it allows and says, there are parts of the code that administratively you have to interpret, because when somebody comes in and asks what the code means, they don't go to the city council, they don't go to you all, they go to staff. And so the staff has to interpret the code. They also say, you also have code enforcement that says, uh, we have to enforce the code. So that's your planning director who leads your code enforcement crew. Um, so the way this is written, for those of us who read this, um, and do this a lot, this is clarifying language that your code lacked before. That says there are, the administration, the enforcement is through the LDRs, goes to the city manager who then delegates it to whomever administrative official it is. In the case of the building code, that's the building official. This isn't the building code. This is the land development regulations. So that would by certainly just be your director of community development. It doesn't take away from any of those other powers and duties and as Gary said, it does, they are the supreme rulers and the decision-makers. This is really good clarifying language where you're going to have.
Personally support the language, but I'll allow each of you to critique it if you wish. Uh, I think staff is, and the planner have made, you know, a, a good argument for why it should be that way. And the chair certainly can accept that, but I recognize we have seven people up here who will all see it a little differently. Uh, Ms. Belay, you can start first.
I agree with it. I, I agree with you. I just have a question. Um, if the city manager is incapacitated in some way, does a deputy city manager then assume those decision-making powers?
Ms. Warren?
Yes, by virtue of having a deputy city manager, that would be the person um, that would serve in the absence of the, the city manager for his role in this. But you'll see that, um, by virtue of adoption of the LDRs, most of these decisions are gonna run seamlessly because they've been automatically delegated to the CPND director. So even with the absence of the city manager, these decisions, all of the site plan applications will keep on in the process with the absence of the city manager, which is why it is actually a great suggestion, um, for modification to the language.
So my question, my next question would be, um, would, does that language have to be present in this particular area or is it assumed?
No, it's, there's probably something in the code that deals with the disability of the manager.
Exactly.
It's the right of succession that addresses that.
Okay.
Alright, Mr. James?
I'm comfortable with the language now that
now that it's been explained. Alright, Mr. Pashan?
I understand. I just think it's broader than I was, I'm really greatly comfortable with, but I understand the points you make.
And so we would count that as a yea or a nay when we get to it.
Yes, you will.
Oh, it's a yea, alright. Mr. Ernst?
I have no problem, sir, with the language.
Mr. McGee made?
None, no problem, sir.
Fine, alright, then the chair calls for improvement of adopting the language as spelled out relative to the
Division, city manager.
The city manager delegating to the director of planning and development. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Council, if I might have a moment, uh, just one clarification of our motion prior. Anything that goes before the design review board will still wind up here, right?
No, no, we, we don't do, we don't do design review.
What I mean is if it's part of a project, it'll still come.
Your jurisdiction is as it is spelled out in the code.
Yeah, no, right.
If, if there's something as part of a project that you would be entitled to review, conditional use?
It's rare, but yeah.
You would, you would see that.
We're dealing with zoning, they're dealing with design, how the building's gonna look.
Yeah, I understand that. I understand that.
And that doesn't come back to us. We don't see building design.
No, but if it's part of a, uh, project, for instance, that needs variances and that guy.
Our business is zoning, there's another board that handles variances.
Well, that's a board of adjustment.
Yeah.
Okay, but I just, you know, if it's part of a larger, something that normally would come to us, still comes to us.
Well, yes, we get it in the initial phases and then it goes to the design process.
Right, Mr. Chair, can I just, just two points?
You'll have to remember, if I could say, um, this, we never, we never can and it's not our job to aesthetically or, or disapprove or approve a project based on, uh, the aesthetics of the project.
No, that, that wasn't, that wasn't my point.
Really was never in our realm to begin with.
No, 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 I just
We never weighed, weighed into those.
Semantics, semantics was wrong, but council, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, we see the project in its initial stage as an outline.
Okay. Um, so two quick
Yes.
Issues that are in the chapter. Um, so dealing with the designer review board, one of the things that Miami Beach recently did was gave them the authority to grant variances, which would streamline the development review process. Now, I don't know that you're ready to go there and I just wanted to clarify that point before I started drafting.
The issue here is we don't know what's going to be asked.
Right.
And so we, we have a, they could make a recommendation to the board that, that grants variances. And then in seven years, we come back, count up the, the variances and say, well, does this rightly belong with design and review or are we happy leaving it with the board of adjustment? I recognize what City of Miami Beach is doing, but then they have far more development issues than, than we have. We're, we're still trying to get to that point.
So I'll draft leaving the board of adjustment with its jurisdiction.
Right, for the time being, and then that's in seven years if we're all here and maybe we all will be, I don't know. We get a chance to review that question again and maybe we'll recommend that we turn it the other way.
Okay.
Uh, but we need a little experience there to see what's gonna happen.
That's quite all right.
Alright.
Second point, so
Second point.
One of the major changes in this chap, in this article is a zoning appeals board. Where, uh, appeals that used to go to the board of adjustment are now going to the city council, sitting as a zoning appeals board. Where appeals that used to go to the board of adjustment are now going to the city council, sitting as a zoning appeals board. Uh, I heard, I was requested after some of the reviews to draft some criteria uh, which were omitted from the language that's in your draft. And I'd, I'd like to read that into the record.
Yes, if you would, please.